Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Monday, March the 2nd, 2020. This evening, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Cub Scout PAC 85. Gentlemen?
Will the audience please rise? Color Guard pulls the colors. Scout salute. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for...
Mayor Van Dusen?
Aye. The motion passes. With that vote, the appointment of Philip Sheffrin has been made to the Commission
Color Guard retreat.
and Family Services, and Phil is with us this evening. Phil, if you would stand, thank you.
(APPLAUSE).
Yes?
And Color Guard dismissed.
I just want to let you know, Phil, that the first meeting is Wednesday at 7:00
Thank you. Great job.
in the conference room A.
The meeting will come to order, and the clerk will please call the roll. I was just going to say, we're going to put you to work, but trustee Sutker, I'll
Trustee Roberts?
Here.
Trustee Sutker?
put the exclamation point on that.
Here.
Trustee Elrich?
Welcome.
Here.
Trustee Bromberg?
Next item, it gives us great pleasure to introduce Chief Lou Jogman from Highland Park,
Here.
Trustee Klein?
Here.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Here.
Mayor Van Dusen?
Here. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. Motion is in order. and also Vice President of the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police. Trustee Roberts, seconded by trustee Sutker. Chief, welcome. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to have removed?
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Pleasure to have you.
It's my pleasure to be here tonight, and it's really my pleasure to come today to present this award of accreditation to the Skokie Police Department.
If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
For those of you that might not be familiar with what accreditation is, accreditation
Aye.
Trustee Elrich?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
is a process whereby there are certain standards for law enforcement, certain standards that
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
maybe are national, and your department is measured against those standards and works to meet those standards throughout a four-year period. And then what happens is that a certain group of assessors will come and assess your police department, and they'll determine whether or not that your police department meets those standards, and they're doing the things that they say they're doing with regards to, again, nationally-recognized practices and procedures for law enforcement. And I am really, really pleased to say that not only did Skokie meet those standards, but in most cases, far, far exceeded those standards. I should be very proud of your department, Mayor. This department, and I know this because I'm from the area, is really recognized as a leader in law enforcement. I can tell you that from firsthand knowledge, that the last time we were out to do an assessment was, I think, 2012, when you guys had it last time, or before that, but I was, 15, 15, and I was on the assessment team. So I actually had the opportunity to come ride with your officers, speak to your command staff, go through your files, go through your policies, and I was really blown away about what they're doing here in Skokie. Really, really impressed, and to that point, taking things back to my own department from Skokie. So they are definitely a leader in the area. Skokie Police Department definitely strives to be among the best, and this award tonight is representative of that. So you should be very, very proud of your police department. And I will just go ahead and read what the inscription is. It's from the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police, and it's our Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. And again, they have to meet certain standards and follow certain guidelines to be eligible to be accredited, and they have done that, in most cases, far exceeded. The Illinois Accreditation Council verifies that the Skokie, Illinois Police Department has policies, procedures, and daily routines that are in full compliance with professional standards of modern law enforcement. Anthony Scarpelli, Chief of Police, Dane Smith, Assistant to the Chief of Police and Accreditation Manager, should be very proud of your police department. So thank you very much for having me today. I want to present this to Chief Scarpelli.[331.03][331.03](APPLAUSE). Mayor and Jack, could you step down for just a second?
We know who really does the work.
(LAUGHING). (INAUDIBLE). Thank you. (INAUDIBLE). 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 I just had a couple brief remarks. Thank you very much, Chief Jagman. I'd also like to thank the mayor, the trustees, and the manager's office for supporting our police accreditation efforts for the past 32 years. I'd also like to acknowledge Deputy Chiefs Baker and Wyman, as well as our administrative assistant, Susan Kendall. The accreditation manager, Dane Smith, couldn't be here tonight due to a death and family. It's really their exceptional and meticulous efforts in the accreditation process, along with everybody else in the organization, that really brings it to fruition. Everybody in the organization plays some role, but, you know, Susan works some very long days to, you know, get us over the finish line, and it's very much appreciated as everybody else's office efforts. I'm also proud of all the Skokie Police Department personnel, both sworn and civilian, for conducting themselves with the utmost integrity and professionalism, and for their collective dedication to best practices in law enforcement. This reaccreditation reflects these values and is evidence of the culture of excellence that we all strive to maintain. I am truly privileged to lead such a fine group of dedicated professionals. Thank you.[628.44][628.44](APPLAUSE).
Well, the accreditation confirms what the residents of the village believe. Chief, every three years, we have an outside organization do a survey of the residents of the village, and we ask them to tell us what we're doing right, where we can make improvement, and so on. And consistently, for the past 20 years, our police department has gotten 90th percentile approval by our residents. We're still trying to find the other 10%. I suspect they got a ticket of some sort, but we are immensely proud of the department, and they do the tough work every day. So Chief, Deputy Chiefs, thank you. Susan, where's Susan? Susan, thank you. It is a great department, and we appreciate everything you do, and thank you very much for coming this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
And apropos, next item is report of our village manager, John Lockery.
Thank you, Mayor Van Dusen and Village Board. Good evening, everyone. Items A, B, and C included on my agenda this evening were approved as part of the consent agenda. I would like to take a moment to provide an update regarding the coronavirus this evening. The Skokie Health Department is closely monitoring this rapidly evolving situation with the coronavirus, and is in regular communications with the state health department, as well as the C2C, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. Our Skokie Health Department is one of only seven in the state of municipal state-certified departments, and is led by Dr. Katherine Canard. Preventative steps are being taken at the local, state, and federal levels to limit the spread of this virus. To date, there have been no cases of this virus in Skokie or at area hospitals, and no one from Skokie is being monitored. Skokie residents are unlikely to be exposed to the coronavirus at this time. Village staff, including all of our departments, the first responders as well, are implementing our emergency preparedness plan. In addition, we are communicating with our community partners, including the Skokie Hospital, our businesses, our schools, and the entire community to ensure everyone is prepared. As a reminder, it's really the individual responsibility to follow good practices that we all do during flu season, and so as a reminder, these include washing our hands, often with soap and warm water, and avoiding touching our eyes, noses, and mouths. Cover your cough when you sneeze with a tissue. Contain germs by staying home if we're sick. Accept or receive medical care and avoid close contact with people who are sick. Updates and resources will be available on the village's website. We'll be updating that on a regular basis, and so www.skokie.org is a tremendous resource. And that completes my report this evening.
Thank you. And we have information on the website.
We sure do. There's a page that is up, and there's been information being updated and revised nearly a daily basis. We'll continue to do that.
And I might add, yesterday, John and I participated in a regional conference call. 117 mayors and managers from our region got together, along with the city of Chicago, and got a report, and it's our understanding that the Congress is in the process of appropriating somewhere between $2.5 and $8 billion for states and municipalities. But as John said, one of the things that was emphasized by the medical professionals on the call is, if we take those daily preparations, wash our hands and cover our mouth when we cough, et cetera, we're going to be okay. There is no need to panic. There have only been four cases reported in the state of Illinois, and my understanding is that those four people are not in danger. So John and our, and we're very fortunate to have Dr. Canard. She's an expert in communicable diseases, and some of you may recall, just a few years ago, when we had the H1N1 scare. It was Dr. Canard in our health department, working with the CDC, that did over 40,000 inoculations in a period of just a month and a half. So we're in very good hands. Follow the website, and we're going to be okay. So John, thank you, and thank Dr. Canard.
Well, do.
Next item on the agenda is report of our corporation council, Michael Lorch.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Good evening, everyone. Items A and B on my report for this evening were approved at the beginning of this evening's meeting, and therefore that would conclude my report for tonight.
Next item on the agenda are six, no, five items on our planned commission. Paul Luke, Chairman, with Matt Branmire. Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor. First case tonight is case 2019-19P. This is a chapter amendment. At the February 6 meeting of the Plan Commission, we reviewed the village manager's request for the staff restudy of the issue of rooming houses, short-term rentals, and other temporary lodging, and amended zoning chapter of the village code to allow some form of short-term rental under certain circumstances. A similar case was initially acted on by the Plan Commission on September 1, 2016. The issue was not heard by the village board until the taxation portion could be studied and more government agencies or government municipalities had regulated the use. On February 19 of 2019, the village board amended the hotel-motel tax section of the village code to tax short-term rentals at private residences for periods of up to 30 days, and as we do for hotels-motels. This case was initially presented to the Plan Commission on July 18 by the, but then tabled in response from staff on several questions from the commission. The former Community Development Director, Peter Pyer, responded to those issues in a memorandum to the commission dated September 19, 2019. The amendments to the zoning chapter are now required to allow short-term rental, known as STRs, in residential and mixed-use districts, and to the other portions of the village code to establish fees and regulations for STRs. STRs do produce local revenue, and there is a large potential for growth in the STR market. The STRs have been found to have some negative impacts, such as increased noise, parking, traffic, and trash, reducing availability of affordable housing, uneven increases in property values and taxes, changing neighborhood character, conflicts with permanent residences, safety and enforcement issues, difficulty obtaining compliance with regulations, and collection of fees. Currently, short-term rentals are not specifically listed as uses in Appendix A of the zoning chapter, and the ordinance is silent on this matter. Rooming houses were removed from the list of uses to prevent their establishment. Staff has discovered cases where a company or individual has purchased or rented a house and leased rooms to multiple employees simultaneously for short periods of time. As with case 2015-2P, which addresses changes to the congregate living business regarding rental housing units rather than owning the accommodations industry, has also been changing, and the village code needs to keep up with these changes. Even though bed and breakfasts are not permitted in the village, there are many listings on the internet where individuals leased rooms that are homes by the night, that is per night. It is not the goal of these recommendations to reduce housing choices, but there are legitimate concerns about occupancy, inappropriate levels of business activity in residential neighborhoods, lack of inspections, and these quai-sai commercial uses. The use of buildings and property beyond your design capacity, improper tax, improper property tax classification, and lost hotel revenue, tax revenue when the customer would otherwise be staying at a hotel. There is a whole continuum of ways people live together. Our task is to decide when certain thresholds trigger different levels of service and intensity beyond what is intended in the zoning district. Skokie uses the International Property Maintenance Code for objective means testing of overoccupancy based on the size and number of rooms, persons per room, and the presence of adequate facilities. We also have a home occupational ordinance that allows limited businesses' activity in certain residences. We do think that to qualify or to equally apply our current ordinances, these use should be regulated by the village's residential rental unit standards and neighborhood integrity ordinance, as well as a new ordinance for STRs. Staff recommended adding a definition of rooming house and short-term rental unit, modifying the definition of hotel, and adding a section regarding rental of rooms. Any unit renting rooms is already subject to the village's residential rental unit standards and neighborhood integrity ordinance, but the proposed text clarifies this. Rooming houses will be prohibited, and short-term rental units will be treated as small hotels, having to pay a hotel tax and be subject to regular inspection. Airbnbs and similar uses would be considered short-term rental units only when the owner or resident is simultaneously occupying the residence. Short-term rental of a residential that is not simultaneously occupied by the owner or resident would be expressly prohibited. Up to two rooms in any residence may be rented for longer than 30 days at a time, as in roommates, without additional regulation. One additional parking space would be required per room, similar to hotel parking requirements. Discussion from the commission included verifying that the whole units could not be rented, participation in the neighborhood integrity ordinance program, parking enforcement, and other actions that we've just discussed. So therefore, the Plan Commission, on the vote of seven ayes, no nays, and two members absent, voted to approve the zoning changes to the village code.
A motion on Plan Commission case 2019-19P, zoning chapter amendment, short-term rentals, is in motion. Trustee Gray Keeler, seconded by trustee Bromberg. Are there comments or questions? Trustee Roberts.
Paul, in any of your Plan Commission hearings, did any Skokie residents that operate an Airbnb?
No, nobody.
Did anyone testify that's actual?
No, not at all.
Okay. So if you had to sum up the purpose behind this, I mean, I was discussing with trustee Gray Keeler last week, you know, there's, the media has portrayed some cases where there's been some outrageous conduct and activity. There's, I can think of a case in Barrington, there's one in Naperville where a house is rented for a big party, and it's supposed to be 10 people, and 100 people show up.
Well, in all those cases, the owner was not present, or is not a resident at the premises. Our ordinance requires that the owner or resident has to be occupying simultaneously with the renter. So hopefully, that'll prevent that from happening.
Yeah. But then, what we, the way I understand it, and the way you just described it tonight, let's say that a Skokie resident wants to rent a room out of her or his house, and they have a one-car garage, and they want to rent out their bedroom. Under this proposed ordinance, would they be able to obtain a license and rent out a room in their, in their house under Airbnb?
The only thing that they would have to qualify for would be the parking, as long as there's adequate parking for that individual.
So in other words?
Regardless if he has a car or not.
Well, so could they use their garage to house the resident, and then the person would park him?
Yeah. It would be up to the building, it would be up to the standards, our inspection. They would have to determine whether that garage is empty.
Okay. And then one of the other requirements I saw in the proposed ordinance is it prohibits offering or serving any type of beverage or food to a guest in an Airbnb. So if?
Well, they would classify it as a bed and breakfast.
But you also?
And we are prohibiting bed and breakfasts in the village.
But you also consider it classified as a small hotel, or like a small hotel?
Yes.
Which many hotels that I've stayed in serve breakfast or have coffee in the room.
Well, they supply coffee in the room, but most hotels don't have restaurants either. I mean, some of the simpler hotels.
Well, I mean, I think almost every major hotel I've stayed at usually has a miniature coffee machine where you can at least have coffee in your room.
Right, that too, but.
Well, so the point I'm?
Back in the day, when I stayed in a motel, six knows nothing.
Well, I guess the point I'm making here is I understand the need, and I support the need for regulation, because I think it could interfere with the enjoyment. People in their homes and residences in Skokie don't want a lot of unwelcome strangers taking up all their parking, or having loud parties, et cetera. So I'm in general in favor of this ordinance and the regulation, but I'm just wondering that there's parts of it that we may have gone just a little bit too far, which is going to be so stringent that it's going to overburden a resident that wants to use Airbnb or become an Airbnb operator, not be able to offer coffee in their home, or a bagel from Kaufman's, or there's no parking spot available. Basically, we'll prohibit them from engaging in that type of activity, and I don't think that's really the intent here. So I'm just questioning whether, and?
I think the intent is, we don't have the ability to, you know, if the person, if the owner of the residence of the property is going to offer his renter a cup of coffee, there's nothing for us to stop him from doing that.
Well, the ordinance?
I understand the others, but I think what we're looking at, and I've talked with staff, and it's enforcement is an issue on this, because you need somebody on site. Having a resident or an owner of the property staying there with the renter will kind of curtail some of the, you know, bad activities that goes on. I mean, we, it's a flawed system because of enforcement, and we've had staff argue about that. They said it's hard, difficult to enforce. But if we, you know, I think what this does, it's just, it gives the homeowner some latitude.
Well, I?
I think what the commission is attempting to do is to say to a homeowner, you're not in the job of providing a restaurant service, but I don't think, in practical terms, they're saying, you can't make coffee. I mean, I make coffee at my house for myself. If somebody is staying at the house, you can offer them coffee, but I think what we're talking about here is what would be a bed and breakfast type of?
Right. You couldn't list it as an amenity as far as, you know, as an amenity to renting a room, that you're going to get a continental breakfast.
Now, I don't know how you balance. You can go from doing nothing, which in fact is what happened in Naperville. They do nothing, and they ran into that problem. At the time, Barrington had no ordinance at all regulating Airbnb or any other. They quickly did after they had their problem. I think this is? I think this is fairly minimalistic. I, we don't want to be intrusive and discourage business, and yet at the same time, we really don't want to happen here, or at least do our best to discourage what happened in Barrington and what happened in Naperville.
Yeah, I would guess that anybody offering their home for rent or a room for rent is not going to advertise free coffee and breakfast in the morning, they're just saying room for rent. You know, I mean, hotels, you know, they, in their service, they offer a continental breakfast.
It's also about the service.
Yeah. Matt, do you have any?
Yeah, overall, we're, I think, splitting hairs many different ways, and among different, many different types of uses and rental arrangements and that sort of thing. I think when it comes down to the food and beverage, it's more about providing the service to them. In an Airbnb situation, and I, which I've rented pretty regularly over the past few years, you, they might have a Keurig or something for you to use, but it's not like they're making it for you and delivering and giving it to you. They're not making breakfast for you. That's one of the errors we're splitting, is that it's not actually a bed and breakfast. It's not a hotel, it's not a restaurant. So as far as the food and beverage, it comes down to that, I think.
Is there anybody in the audience? Of course.
As far as the neighborhood integrity ordinance part of this, the, it's an owner-occupied property, correct?
Yes.
Is what we're talking. And are there exceptions in the neighborhood integrity ordinance to places that are owner-occupied that they don't have to go through the four-hour course?
I'm not familiar with yours, I couldn't tell you.
Not, if they're owner-occupied, they don't have to pay the annual fees?
Yeah, the provision you're thinking of was for small units, under three units in a building, if an owner was also living on site, there was some relief, but-
Is this the same case?
I do not believe that this would fall under the same auspices in terms of a landlord-tenant relationship, and therefore it would not apply in terms of an exception.
Okay.
Well, the, the owner is not a landlord because they're not doing a lease.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, specifically, it says you may not stay there more than thirty days.
It's not the same relationship, it wouldn't fall under that provision.
Oh, it's a different term. Okay, I'm sorry, I just-
It's a good question, and we, you have to pause to think about it, but the relationship between a landlord-tenant, which falls under the neighborhood integrity ordinance, is not the same as we've written it as somebody renting out a room.
Okay, thank you.
No lease, it's not long-term, and we would define it as a different relationship.
Thanks. Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
I'm going to vote no at this time. I, I think this is too intrusive, and it could certainly use a little bit more work, particularly where there was no input by anyone who's actually engaged in this prior to this being issued, so at this point, I would vote no.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
I vote aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
I'm going to vote aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Wenders.
Aye, the motion passes.
My next three cases are all related, and so what I'll do, I'll briefly go over all three cases, but each case will need to be voted on separately. In case 2019-47P, this is a zoning chapter amendment. This case was reviewed at the February 6 meeting of the Plan Commission, and involves a request for a zoning map amendment to rezone the southern portion of an existing light industrial building from an M3 to a B2 commercial use. The petitioner is proposing to operate a civic, social, and fraternal organization which requires a special use permit in the B2 district, hence the request for the zoning amendment. In case 2019-48P, this is a site approval, site plan approval, involves a request of the petitioner at the subject property, which is greater than one acre in size, the petitioner is proposing to operate an event space with changes to the site plan. The primary considerations for the case are four relief items associated with parking. These included requirements to provide one space for every 2.75 event seats, permission to park vehicles, and drive aisles for valet parking, permission to use other tenants' parking areas when they are not in use, and to allow off-site parking provided, executed parking agreement must be provided. The proposal also requires a rezoning and special use permit. So, moving on from the site plan into the special use permit, this is a request involving, again, a special use permit to permit a civic, social, and fraternal organization which is listed as a use in a B2 zoning district. The applicant is proposing to open an event space to host weddings, lectures, and other events. The primary consideration for the special event use permit, or special use permit, is the number of people attending the events. The occupancy is directly tied to the number of parking spaces available on site, which differs between weekends, weeknights, and weekdays. On weekdays, events will be limited to 376 attendees, while on weeknights and weekends, occupancy can increase to 528 people. If needed, valet parking or off-site parking can be utilized in order to increase the number of attendees to a maximum of 750 occupancies. The proposed, also, excuse me, the proposal also requires a rezoning, which we've gone through, the site plan approval, and for the most part, in all three cases, the Plan Commission voted seven ayes, with seven ayes, no nays, and two people absent to approve all three cases.
Okay. Mark, do you have any comments you would like to make?
No, I'm here along with Ferasiella, happy to respond to questions, but we've all given your answers.
Thank you. We have three votes. Before we go through them, I would like to ask members of the board if anybody has any questions on the project itself. Trustee Roberts.
Well, I'd just like to, if you could maybe, someone could go over just a little bit the traffic. When you're done to have your larger gatherings, the ingress and egress to the, and how the valet parking is going to work, if you could just kind of walk us through that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, happy, oh, sorry. Thank you again. Mark Ursho with Paul Sinelli on behalf of Ferasiella. So the first thing to remember here is that the average event that occurs here is expected to be below the numbers where we need valet. So we think an average event here is within that 500, and I think we're at 28 people that can park on this site with no valet at all. But we also wanted to preserve the ability to have larger events. Thought is that those might happen one, two, three times a year, and I think our current maximum on site, and I will say that, as you can see from your conditions, we're still working with staff and the fire department to make sure everyone's happy with how our valet plan is laid out, but it's really at this point just down to the details. But we could bring this site up to, what are we at, 715, correct? Up to 715 people on this site using valet. The reason for the larger number, 750, is that that's actually what the site's designed for. It could go up to that size in terms of ingress, egress, bathrooms, all the things you typically expect in your health code, and we have that because should that need come up, we'd like to be able to serve it, and if it does, we have the opportunity to go and seek off-site parking, subject to getting the off-site parking approved by the staff, which is, I think, the current condition. So cars will come in, can I get this?
We'll try this.
Perfect.
See if it works.
Right there.
Oh, there we go.
All right.
Don't hurt yourself.
There you go, okay, good. And I do have with me Javier Milan with Kale Away. If we need to get more technical, I can absolutely turn this over to him. We designed the property, again, over 525 people, and I want to say again, the, recognize that that's never going to happen during the workday because our number is limited to, I think, 376, it's under 400 people that we could have during a weekday event. And we'll say that while we submitted and showed how you could use all the different rooms, we couldn't even get it to that number with the kind of events we're talking about during the day. It is, yes, a facility that's designed as a community center. We do anticipate weddings, bar mitzvahs, et cetera, to be held here, but we also anticipate that someone who wants to have a speaker series might be in there during the day. There are small rooms here where you could have a luncheon, if there is a sisterhood or another community group, and this is open to the community that wants to use it. Great place to put a meal for 200 or 300 people that could easily be in there, be satisfied with the parking. So we're only now talking about what could occur in the evening or on the weekends, when of course, most of this area is not, is not being used. So we have a valet parking lane that comes through here in front of an opening, opening the building. The valets would pick up the cars, the cars here. We did this in work in combination with Red Top Valet, who reviewed the plan, said they sent a letter to the village confirming that they could operate our site based on that valet plan. We wanted to make sure, it was a suggestion to us, a very good one, to make sure that someone who actually does this could show us out. So what happens in the valet situation is, there will be signs here and here. Valet parking will occur along this back row of parking, in all of these parking spots here, and there will be a row of cars in front here, as well as these parking spots here. Signage to make sure that someone who's not using valet drives around, we have drive lanes there, we've submitted to your staff auto-turn analyses of driving, et cetera, but just to make sure that everyone coming in for either use can come in, exit, or go to their cars, and then come back around and into this entrance here. For those of you who may have seen earlier plans, we did have some parking along the lines here, and we also had parking in this area on what's the eastern drive aisle for when it's cleared north is here, on this drive aisle, and the fire department said, you know, we're not as comfortable with you having cars blocking, even though there's enough room for vehicles to get through, for a fire truck to get through, having cars there that would block fire trucks. I'm a big believer in listening to my fire departments, and those have all been removed. So there's no longer parking at this end if you've got the old plans in front of you or along here.
How do you get in and out of the property to the streets?
Oh, so there are multiple locations, I don't know if we, do you have an overall plan? Do you have one? I have one on a PowerPoint, but I don't want to put that up. Sorry for the professional level of the graphics here. And Javier, we're going to quickly get to the point where you should come up and talk about this. You want to walk through, Javier? Again, Javier Milan with Kale Away.
Yeah, good evening. Like Mark said, Javier Milan. So, so this is the site right over here, and in terms of ingress and egress, as you're aware of, there's ingress egress to Touey Avenue on what I'm going to call the back, the backside or the western side. You could also connect, you know, with this access drive over here that also serves the export fitness. You also have accessibility to McCormick Boulevard, and if need be, if somebody feels the need to actually traverse through Mariano's and get to the signal, they could because there's all those connections, so-
Don't tell Mariano's that.
No, I, I know, but what I'm saying is that they're not manlocked to only one access drive. There's different ways of getting in and out of there.
I believe there are two regular roadway access, not including Mariano's.
Correct.
Located down on McCormick Boulevard.
Correct, right here.
Where you could also enter.
Thank you, Mark.
Did that answer the question? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Thanks, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Now, we have three votes, they're all pertaining to the property at 3412-3426 Touey. The first is Plan Commission Case 2019-47P, zoning map amendment. A motion is in order, trustee Klein, seconded by trustee Bromberg. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Wenders.
Aye, the motion passes. The second is Plan Commission Case 2019-48P, site plan approval. Trustee Bromberg, seconded by trustee Roberts. You have me a little worried there. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Wenders.
Aye, the motion passes. And finally, Plan Commission Case 2019-50P, special use permit. Motion is in order, trustee Klein, seconded by trustee Sutker. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Wenders.
Aye, the motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for helping us bring this special use to the community. Eric, I could see it coming.
Thank you. Next item, Paul, before you begin, I want to introduce a old friend, I won't say how long, Mayor Rick Creer. Mayor, thank you for being with us. Mayor Creer is with us this evening on the next case. Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me. This is Case 2019-51P. At the January 16 meeting of the Plan Commission, we reviewed the case of Niles Township Board of Auditors to amend an existing site plan approval for two existing buildings on a lot over one acre in size in order to construct, in addition to the food pantry at 8341 Lockwood Avenue, in a NX neighborhood mixed-use zoning district. Pardon me. Relief is also being requested from Chapter 118-218 to provide 31 parking spaces rather than the requested 33. The addition, which will be constructed within a portion of the existing community garden, is requested by the township in order to increase the amount of storage space for the donations that they are receiving. An area currently striped as a loading zone within the parking lot to the north of the food pantry will be converted back to a two-parking space area, increasing the total number of parking spaces to 31, and bringing the subject site closer to compliance with the village code. In response to a question from a commissioner who asked if the expansion of the building would require an additional storm water detention to be provided on site, the petitioner responded that the township is working with the village, village's engineering division to determine if existing detention area is adequate. No, this is, the parties spoke at the meeting. Elevations for the addition to the food pantry were heard and reviewed by the Prince Commission at their February 13 meeting. Therefore, the Plan Commission recommends by a vote of seven ayes, no nays, with two members absent, that the petitioner's request be granted.
A motion on Plan Commission Case 2019-51P, site plan approval for 5255 Main Street and 8341 Lockwood Avenue is in order, trustee Klein, seconded by trustee Bromberg. Are there any comments or questions? Are there any comments or questions? We will have a three-way motion, seconded and made by trustee Sutker, as well as Klein and Bromberg. Now, leave it up to the clerk to decide for the minutes. Are there any comments or questions? Trustee Klein.
I just wanted to say that I am just a big fan of the food pantry and the job you do. I'm there on a very small scale, and what I see is very remarkable, and the people that you feed every day. So I just want to say thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Eldridge.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Wendus.
Aye, the motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you for your good work. We all echo trustee Klein's sentiments. Thank you.
Yes, sentiments that I was going to say, but trustee Klein sent them for me. That concludes my...
Your many reports.
My many reports, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a report on the five-year consolidated plan for CDBG. Carrie Habers.
All right. Good evening. Tonight's public hearing is being conducted to obtain any final input to the village's Community Development Block Grant or CDBG, five-year consolidated plan for program years 2020 through 2024, and the one-year action plan for program year 2020, also known as fiscal year 2021. Plan approval, public hearings are held in March of each year, following three preceding public hearings held at village board meetings in December, January, and February. The hearing will conclude with the board's formal consideration and anticipated approval of both plans prior to the submittal of the plans to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. This hearing was legally advertised in a local newspaper on January 30th and February 6th, including a list of the primary goals for the five-year plan and projects and activities for the one-year action plan. Preliminary draft copies of the plans were available to the public at Village Hall and the Skokie Public Library since the legal notice was published, and no comments were submitted by the public. So a quick overview of our meetings, and tonight is the fourth and final meeting, hopefully, considering the five-year consolidated plan and the one-year action plan. And this upcoming five-year consolidated plan purpose, I would say a lot of what I'm going to present tonight is very similar to the current five-year plan and the approach. After all of our input, we felt that it was going to be very similar to what we've done in the past. But the five-year plan is essentially a comprehensive plan for CDBG. It guides funding decisions. It also offers a general review of demographics and addresses the three primary goals of the Housing and Community Development Act, which include, which are, provide decent housing, provide a suitable living environment, and expand economic opportunities. And then the one-year action plan, the purpose is essentially an annual application to HUD for entitlement funding. And then we distribute the funds based on village goals and objectives, which are grouped by capital improvements, public services, and then also planning and administration activities. And this will be the first year of the five-year plan to implement the new five-year consolidated plan. The format is very similar to the previous five years, which was brand-new five years ago. So it includes public participation, demographics, housing, market information and data, and five-year priorities. So I want to say thank you to everyone watching at home or here in the audience of participating in this plan, really dating back to last summer. We had residents participate, I believe over 180 residents participated in an online survey. We had organizations via focus groups or other surveys specifically geared towards them from service government and education organizations. We also had formal meetings as an agenda item on the Economic Development Commission, Human Relations Commission, Commission on Family Services, and the Board of Health. We also had interviews of various village staff and departments and divisions. So lots of demographic data, not to go into too much detail, but a lot of the data is based on the American Community Survey, which is kind of a spin-off of the census data, where it's usually a rolling five-year average, and then also other data prepared by HUD and other organizations. The American Community Survey, most of the data is based on a 2011 to 2015 data automatically provided by HUD. It is updated annually, and again, a rolling five-year average. The comprehensive housing affordability strategy, also based on the same type of data, but it looks at more of the housing issues. And there's a section within the five-year consolidated plan looking at various housing problems. There are, I guess, regular housing problems and severe housing problems. Both of them consider insufficient kitchen items or plumbing, quote-unquote "regular", where there's a cost burden, housing cost burden of at least 30% or more than 30% of a household income and more than one person per room. Where it becomes a severe problem is when more than 50% of the household income is the cost burden and more than one and a half people per room. Just a general overview, median income did not keep pace with inflation for those in Skokie, and still looking at priorities focusing on the younger and older households. Over 40% of the Skokie households have housing costs that exceed 30% of household income, which is the maximum recommended for affordable housing. And this is before we factor in any transportation costs, but there isn't a lot of data out there for that specifically. And then of the houses that have at least one housing problem, almost 90% of them are occupied by low and moderate-income households. The Illinois Department of Public Health and the Skokie Health Department provided information on blood lead levels. The six-year average for Skokie is slightly lower than five years ago, just under 1,000 children per year are screened. And as of, oh, now I'm forgetting the specific date, but recently, the threshold used to be 10 micrograms per deciliter. That was recently lowered to 5 micrograms per deciliter because just any amount is really a potential negative impact on children. And so fortunately, in Skokie, it's less than one child per year at the 5 micrograms, and then just over three years on average at the 10 micrograms per deciliter. The primary sources of lead for children are, like eyeliner products, or maybe possibly moving recently to Skokie, recent adoptions from overseas. Two recent cases, one was an old toy from a grandfather that had the lead-based paint on the toy, and they were, you know, sucking on it or chewing on it. And then there is one multifamily building in Skokie. Most of the windows were replaced. There was at least one that was not, and it did have peeling paint and did have ramifications for that family. But that's, the health department's helping with that one. And so the health department will continue to monitor lead sources and continue to educate residents. Alliance to End Homelessness in suburban Cook County, they continue to have data more at a county level, not Skokie-specific. So the human services staff is more of our resource for homelessness. Currently, there are, I would say, maybe three official homeless individuals in Skokie, and there are roughly five to six people kind of on the border of Skokie who have experienced homelessness in the past year. But we do have a homeless protocol that was established in 2014 to help those in need. This map might look a little different from the last five years. There's a calculation based on low and moderate-income households per census block group. The four that are highlighted here, they're typical, they're perennial, I guess, block groups that do have a higher concentration of low and moderate-income households. The ones that are more in the pinkish color scheme, some of them are matching from five years ago, but some of them, they kind of flip-flop depending on how the formula is calculated. So for the next five years, we'll be looking at potentially investing in street resurfacing and those sort of activities within these highlighted areas. Housing market, so the median household income from 2014 is a little over $66,000. The median home value is a little over $280,000. Although the incomes and values of these two items are higher than state and national averages, the growth was outpaced by the state and the U.S. So we didn't grow as much as, say, the state on average and the U.S. on average. The median monthly rent, just over $1,000. And then the affordable housing share in Skokie, which is calculated by the Illinois Department of Housing Development, is 19.9%. So it's actually up from 14.7% in 2013. This is a highlight of some foreclosure data. As you can see, 2010 was the peak, but fortunately, the number of filings, foreclosure filings in Skokie is on the downswing, and hopefully will continue on that trend. And then Skokie families in poverty. The number of families in Skokie has grown, but it's also remained below proportion-wise compared to the state and the U.S. over the last three data measures here. And also, the number of individuals in poverty has also increased over the same timeframe. So our five-year priorities, the vision statement doesn't change or hasn't changed unless you want to provide some suggestions to change it, but felt it pretty much applied five years ago and continues to apply. So, Skokie CDBG program will provide a better quality of life for low and moderate-income residents through bricks and mortar projects and service activities. Our goals for capital improvements, services, and planning and administration just tweaked a little bit. The first goal, we changed it to ensure housing is affordable, accessible, and sustainable. Making them affordable is maybe a tall order, so just trying to support maybe existing affordable housing is more of the approach that might be more feasible and doable within the next five years. Typically, owner-occupied homes, affordable rental apartments, frail elderly and frail elderly, special needs and energy efficiency, improve infrastructure, including street and alley resurfacing projects, sidewalk replacements, and any safety and security projects in low and moderate-income neighborhoods that may be, that may come up in the next five years. And then, one of our objectives for improving facilities, like buildings, for instance, construction and rehabilitation projects, fund those so organizations can provide improved, expanded, or more affordable services with other funding sources, since we have that 15% cap. Anyone who may have a building or facility in Skokie, we encourage them to take a look at their facility, see if there's something that needs help there where we aren't limited to the amount of funds that we could help them in a different element of their business. And then also for services, counseling, supportive and referral activities focusing on children and youth, senior aging in place, special needs, and dental and other healthcare. I would say the tweak that's come from the last five years, looking more at financial and credit counseling, a lot of the conversation, especially during focus groups, were that, you know, some people have a hard time gaining approval for applying for an apartment, for instance, because maybe their credit score is low, or they're having financial, that's the financial situation, credit score is typically the thing that keeps them from getting housing. So we kind of wanted to call that out more specifically. And then also career counseling and job placement, another set of objectives. Now, not necessarily that this would always have to be CDBG-supported, but it's an item that could be supported with CDBG funding. And then planning administration, like tonight's public hearing for the various plans, we also have a year-end action report, and then also just day-to-day activities. And then our funding focus is to help Skokie's most vulnerable residents, either directly or via not-for-profit organizations, which we depend on quite a few every year. And then new this year, or for the next five years, also focusing on local organizations. If there are similar services that are proposed by multiple entities, preference would be given towards a more local organization. And then the one-year action plan, I'm pleased to announce that we found out that our funding amount a week and a half ago, and we budgeted correctly, or we got lucky. We estimated $600,000, but we'll receive more than that, so we'll be able to put additional funds towards the social worker position and the Affordable Housing Initiative. So the official amount is $615,368. So we'd be able to add over $2,000 to the social worker position, and over $13,000 towards the Affordable Housing Initiative. I guess the unfortunate part, it wasn't at least $620,000, so the alternate service that was a part of the February public hearing, we will not be funding them, at least for this year. So there's the breakdown. So we'll use some unallocated funds, and then also some program income for a grand total of over $673,000 for the budget for the coming year. So the next steps would be requesting approval tonight of the five-year consolidated plan and the one-year action plan, and we'll be able to submit those plans on time on Tuesday, March 17th. And so just an update of yet another next step that's not specific to tonight, but the regional assessment of fair housing that typically is done before our five-year plan and one-year action plan, but since we participated in a regional effort led by Cook County, HUD was okay with us doing things out of order. But there will be a public hearing probably April or May, and the report is expected to be finalized in summer 2020. So it'll be incorporated into the five-year plan by reference at this point. If for some reason we need to make, there's a big decision that's not quite incorporated into the consolidated plan, maybe we could make an adjustment in April or May, or my preference would be when we have our update in December to do some sort of update to our five-year plan at that time, but that's still up in the air at this point. So I just wanted to give you an idea on a next step that's kind of out of, that we haven't done before, I guess would be the best way of putting that. So are there any questions?
Trustee Sutker.
I just had a question about the lead and the eyeliner products. Was that a one-incident case, or were there many of those?
Many of those. It's kind of a cultural aspect that's used based on certain population within Skokie, so it's not like, just like one window with peeling paint, it's multiple households.
That was curious to me. Thank you.
Motion is in, yep, hold on, let me get the motion. Motion is in order. Trustee Gray Keeler, seconded by trustee Roberts. So it's good news we got a little bit more money than we maybe thought, huh? But so the additional money that's going to go into the Affordable Housing Initiative, what's the total and where's staff at? And have you discussed with any specificity what you would like to see that money be used for?
So we have discussed, at least conceptually, how to use the funds. I want to say the amount would come out to about $75,000 roughly, just speaking off the top of my head, for this coming... the top of my head, for this coming program year. Our hope is to help invest in existing affordable housing stock occupied by families who would be income-qualified, much like our home improvement program, but that may, there would be more of a focus on likely multifamily buildings, where it's like probably a condo setting or townhouses, where there'd be a group of, let's say there's four townhouses, all four of them are occupied by income-eligible households, and then we'd be able to help them with maybe energy efficiency improvements, like maybe new windows, doors, maybe help tuck pointing, new roof, that sort of thing, if their parking areas are crumbling, that we'd be able to help, depending on the, the amount of work that needs to be done, you know, within the limits of our budget. So, those are options that we kind of have to come down to the point of how much money we have versus how much is needed to make those improvements, but kind of as like a trial period of identifying a group of, say, four units that they would all be income-eligible, and we kind of do a trial period, see how that project works, and see if we could replicate that in the future.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Eldridge.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Wendus.
Aye, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
And I'd like, before we adjourn, I'd like to recognize trustee Bromberg, who has a congratulatory message for us.
Thank you. On behalf of the village board, mayor, and staff, I would like to extend a sincere congratulations and a mazel tov to our dear friends, Village of Skokie Corporation Consul Michael and Suzie Lorge, on their very well-deserved award from Keshet at the 2020 Annual Rainbow Banquet at the Hilton Chicago on March 15th. Suzie has been an early childhood educator for 30 years and anchors the kindergarten staff at the Chicago Jewish Day School. We, of course, know and value Michael's service to the Village of Skokie, first as a village trustee, and now as corporation consul. Michael's career began as a prosecutor and then continued at his firm. He was appointed as an administrative law judge and a special assistant to the Illinois Attorney General. Suzie and Michael are involved in leadership roles throughout our neighborhood. They are the founders of the Greater Chicago Jewish Festival, the largest cultural event in Chicago Jewish community, and the longest-running Jewish festival in the country. Keshet is a well-known non-for-profit organization with many programs in Skokie that provide thousands of children, adults, with educational, recreational, vocational, and residential resources for the past 36 years. Keshet has integrated students, campers, residents, and employees with disabilities into 70 sites in Chicago, in the Chicago area, and throughout the Midwest. Globally, Keshet has trained over 15,000 staff members, providing the tools necessary for successful inclusion. Keshet's local leadership is comprised of 100 leaders. They also provide the inspiration, direction, and funding required to fulfill the organization's missions to do whatever is necessary to allow individuals with disabilities to achieve their potential. On behalf of a grateful community, congratulations to everyone in Keshet, and we stand to send them our best wishes for a successful event. And to our good friends, Michael and Suzie Lorge, thank you for all you do every day.
Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? If not, trustee Roberts.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.